I'd like to call the Hazel Park Board of Education Special Meeting to order this August 11th, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Beaton?
Here.
Becker? Portras?
Present.
Fox?
Here.
McRumboys?
Here.
Rattie?
Here.
Henson?
Here. Approval of the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda.
I make motion to approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Motion made by Heidi and support by April to approve the agenda as written. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Portras?
Yes.
Beaton?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
McRumboys?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes. So we're up to public comment. I'm going to read my little statement here and I have an addition to it from the open meetings book. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a community public meeting. The board has provided two opportunities during the meeting for the public to address the board respectfully. It's also posted on the wall some of the things I'm going to read. This one, number six in the rules, it says, "Public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against school board members or school district employees that disrupt the order of the meeting and are totally unrelated to the matter in which the member or employee performs his or her duties. Speakers should be aware that if statements violate the rights of others under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, such comments may result in legal liability." Also, please refrain from using improper language and to address the board respectfully and you respect the board, not the audience. So the first person, please state your name and address, is Don McGinnis.
Don McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. I'm here again to bring up the same thing that I've been bringing up for months now, is there's a problem with you guys' procedures, problem with how you guys address the procedures. I, again, you know, I keep hearing, saying people say, you know, that, you know, trust the process, trust the process. Well, your process is broken. You guys don't have the staff that, in place to make the process work. Superintendent was half out. You don't have a real athletic directors. Every person that you guys hire is non-qualified for the job. And I stand here in front of you guys to tell you guys that it's wrong and how you guys go about it. Why did some coaches get emails to return or not? I did not. My coaching staff did not. Why do some get them? Why do some have to reapply and some don't? I didn't have to reapply the year before. So why did I have to reapply this year? When I did apply, when the job posting was posted, I did apply because I found out it was, that I was allowed to. You guys once turned around and said that I didn't apply. Well, I proved that I applied. Now you guys saying I didn't apply on time. I showed you a time. I've still asked what was the date that it was due by because the job was still posted when I, over a week after I applied. Second on that note, you guys said I wasn't in touch. I was in contact almost every week with a staff member from the school, asking about open mats, camps, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Not once I was ever told. And after June 5th, they just stopped talking to me altogether. There was no comments afterwards. Might have been June 6th, I'm sorry, but again, we need a process that works. You guys keep pushing coaches out. You guys are on your six coach out of seven years for the Hazel Park wrestling program. Six head coaches, not assistant coaches, six head coaches in seven years. The turnaround, no one wants to stay here. And when you do stay here, retaliation is a thing. I sit up here and I am retaliated every single day. I barely even say anything on Facebook, let alone I'm the one who's been called a racist and all the above. I'll tell you guys right now, my love for Hazel Park is dwindling. Regardless if I moved my kids out for safety or not, it shouldn't matter. I'm still a taxpayer. I still help out with the Junior Vikings. I still donate. I still do all these things for Hazel Park because this is where I live. So yes, I'm still a valued person in the community regardless if my kids don't go here. My kids don't go here because of the issues that you guys let happen so long. I had countless meetings with countless staff members who all lied around the table multiple times. Lied. Not just with me there, with tons of people there, some I even have recordings of. There's a problem with your process. There's no, I don't, I don't even know how else to say it. You think I like coming up here every single week to get criticized on Facebook and all that? No. I'm coming up here to alert you guys, say, hey, there's a problem. Fix it. That's all I got.
Kaylin McGinnis?
Kaylin McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. I'd like to say this. How can you as a board sit there and tell yourselves that you can trust the process when we have given circumstantial evidence that says otherwise? You cannot trust the process when the superintendent is sitting around having lunch at a Coney on Saturday with a board member, the athletic director, assistant, and HR. You can't sit there and say that processes have been done correctly when HR's son drew a map to our home and labeled it what he did. And the officer that was supposed to investigate it is on HR's Facebook commenting under her pictures. Doesn't that seem strikingly odd and extremely biased to you that a threat assessment was never done? Had a thorough investigation been done, they would have concluded that this was not the first issue to take place with that young adult and us. They would have known that before the map was drawn, he was calling us names and to some, calling us names to some of his football peers. Why? Are you also aware that HR allowed her child to throw a party with alcohol at her home and that other school employees' childrens attended that party?
Okay. You have to stop. Danielle Orin?
Danielle Orin, 7:30, East Woodward Heights Boulevard. Why are we here, guys? Talk about wrestling?
Can you leave me here? It's really hard to hear you. I'm sorry.
Did you catch my name and address?
Yes.
Okay. Said, why are we here? Talk about wrestling? Coaching position that is covered under the HPAA union contract that specifically outlines the hiring process, salary, the order in which you hire, in district personnel versus out of district personnel. It tells you exactly how you're supposed to do this. Tells you who's supposed to do this. And the Board of Ed is not it. Why are we here? You are wasting our time and our money. This is silly. If you look at the union contract that you guys signed, you would see that the athletic director did it correctly. Then let's circle back around to this former wrestling coach because I have some personal experiences as an athletic mother. I personally know that he's held practice without a first aid kit. He had a wrestler get injured without a first aid kit in the gym. And our swim coach loaned him ours, which we never got back. Fast forward several months, I'm leaving swim practice, he is yet again holding open mats without a first aid kit. And I catch his wrestler in the hallway bleeding and pull my personal first aid kit out of my purse to bandage this kid up. Why is there no first aid kit during open mats, especially when they had our first aid kit from the pool deck that they never returned? So if he's such a great coach that cares so much about these kids, why is he holding practice without the necessary medical equipment to make sure they are safe? There are staff that can back me up on this. There are cameras in the building that can back me up on this. Then we're going to back up to last week as we're leaving swim practice and he's in the building. Is he supposed to be in the building when he's not staff? When he doesn't have children in our building? Because it was unsettling to come out and find him there, knowing he wasn't supposed to be there and the coaches were all in a meeting. He didn't identify himself to anybody. Several of the parents didn't know who he was until I pointed it out and then he quickly left. Does that sound like somebody that's ethical that you want around your children? Because I don't. I didn't feel safe in that hallway with him. These are all things you need to take into consideration while you're hearing statements about the former wrestling coach. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jonathan Satterfield. Pardon me?
No, you don't, I don't think they have a choice. If you call them, they come. If they, he wants to not come, then that's his prerogative. But if he's next in line, then he's got to come to the mic. Oh, you want to do yours after three minutes? Perfect. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Andrew Crumhammer.
Just a quick point of order, just a minute, I understand. Mr. President, you said that when we're addressing, you guys are addressing the board as a whole, you as president, or what was the last word in your statement that you read?
I, you can't.
I didn't have my time, but.
Individuals. You can't attack or assault individuals. You address the board.
It was something about you're addressing the board as a board of education, board as a whole.
I, I don't know. I read that whole.
I think you're referring to when you said you're addressing the board, not the audience.
Okay. Thank you, April.
Is that acceptable, that I'm addressing the board?
You're addressing us. You're not going to turn around and speak to the audience.
The board, yes.
Okay, all right. Good evening. Retaliation, unfortunately, is real. And I will consider somebody smiling at me like a joker or laughing at me as harassment as I'm talking. I'm here to talk to the board specifically. In this book, I can't believe it's this much in over this many years, it's about, represents about 100 names. It's not about 100 now. 100 names of just like Don and Kaylin McGinnis' experiences. It's different stories, different names, different subjects, but it all is like the same stuff. So I mean, I don't even know if you have to allegedly, because it's all alleged, allegedly take their evil word for it. You could just go back and start looking at all the names. It's hard to hide. I wrote this stuff down today because it's getting to the point where you're denying faith. I know you guys know that word, but I'm going to say what it is. It's free and appropriate public education. And Mr. Patterson, I mean, the board will know that appropriate is the key word there. And when you have someone gatekeeping and telling your people that, go home, this is not the district for you, and making it hard and all that type of thing, it almost infringes on your civil liberties. So I'm just going to start talking about, I'm just naming some stuff. I don't got a lot of common sense. The word was danger. She told, someone told you danger. Someone told you slippery slope. Someone told you one employee. Someone told you legal jargon. Why would someone say that to you? That's almost like a form of bullying, being a bully. You guys know better. You're elected by the citizens to watch this and you got someone telling you. So I'll just read them off. It's clear. Clear as day. You know what I'm talking about. You have numerous people leaving. You have the blueprint. Everybody remembers that. Added positions, you've stored of justice, that's a prison reform, underqualified hires, dividing conquer leadership, one of the first means the culture was dead. It needed to be replaced. Staffing issues, horrible academics, subpar athletic hires, and the motion. The motion that everybody's waiting for, that someone's got to do something. You're elected to do it. You got to do something. It's a vote of non-confidence. And it's just on how, and how do you handle it? Athletics, six out of seven coaches, some astronomical, something like that. I've never heard anything like this. Especially the town for Hazel Park and yes, academics should be number one. But wrestling story, no one's going to argue with that. Six out of seven coaches, blah, that's, that's a, not to the athletic department, but then when you scratch the athletic department, you've got three A.D.s. So if that's not a write-up, that's not a vote of non-confidence, that's not ask for resignation, that's not accountability, that's not something. It's got to be something. And how are we going to handle it going forward? Well, solution's based. He's right. It's policy change. Considering that policy change is all you want. I've been around top athletics my whole life. I would never get involved in anything like this. Never. That's why you have the A.D.s that took the job and told you no. Because nobody wants to deal with this. Nobody. Nobody wants to deal with it. The wrestling should take care of the policy. If you take care of the policy change, the wrestling should never happen again. Should be real clear. Doesn't matter if you're going with Don or Patrick or who are you going with, blah, blah. You take care of that policy change. That should take care of that. But again, you've had your baseball coach, your basketball coach, and now your wrestling coach, all gone. And a new, and a new athletic department, A.D., all right, that doesn't seem unusual. We're not shortchanging kids. That's what we're here for. Not shortchanging them by having six wrestling coaches in seven years. And then the budget. I wrote it down because I had to keep it real straight. I only got 35 seconds. We had to drive straight. We were going to lose the district to the Oldham County Schools. Then it got a little bit better than COVID happened. Then we got COVID money. Then we had some money. And then COVID went away, then it took the money away. Then we got in a budget shortfall and now we're in distress again. So maybe I'm lying. Maybe I didn't say that right. Maybe I'm wrong. Okay? And the very top priority of this administration is to get a 5% raise to all the administration staff, right? Somebody in your district that works for your district works summer school. She works Monday through Thursday. She has normal deductions and she has insurance taken out. You know what she made for two weeks? $33. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Sherri Reitz wrote a letter. Debbie's going to read it, but you need to put on your microphone.
To the members of the board.
Do we have her address or anything?
It does not say her address.
Thank you.
She has her.
No, no, we, thank you.
I am here tonight because I believe our district has a serious problem in how we protect and support our employees when they are targeted, harassed, or defamed, both inside and outside of the workplace. Over the last year and a half, multiple staff members, myself included, have been subjected to online harassment, personal threats, and public gossip. In my own case, I was harassed and threatened on Facebook by a central office investigation, by a central office employee over an email I never sent. Although that employee ultimately resigned, there was no real resolution, no investigation results shared, no public stance taken to protect the staff member who was targeted. That individual has since been hired by another district with no consequences for their actions here. I am not the only one. Another employee, now our district plumber and newly appointed head coach, was harassed on social media by individuals connected to a former coach. These individually, individuals have repeatedly spread harmful rumors, involved students in adult conflicts, and worked to undermine the employment of this staff member. This is not just petty drama. This is damaging to our school's culture, our students' perception of adults, and the professional reputation of our staff. What is most troubling is that there has been no clear action taken by this board or administration to address the ongoing harassment. Instead, there are indications that the targeted staff member's job could even be in jeopardy because of the pressure from those instigating the conflict. This is unacceptable. The Bible tells us Proverbs 29:18, there's, where there is no vision, the people perish. Hazel Park has been operating without a clear vision for far too long. In the process, we have lost sight of our main purpose, our students, and also how to simply be good people to one another. We have allowed cyber bullies and community members, some of whom are no longer, whom no longer even have children in our schools, to pit us against each other. I say it's time to cast a new vision. Let that vision be one of unity, professionalism, and care for those who serve our students every day. Let HP Can Count on Me be the rallying cry for our central office, our board, our staff, and our community. Let our staff and students know that from this moment forward, we can count on you to do the right thing, to put an end to the drama and to start fresh. From this moment on, we must make our staff a first priority, the very people who have always made our kids theirs. We have good people in this district and they deserve to be treated as such. Let us know again that we can count on you. Patrick Wright is one of those people. He has always put kids first, kept them out of adult drama, and served not only our students, but also the students of Madison Heights and Frazier. Other communities see his value. He is one of ours. It's time we recognize it, too. I am asking the board to publicly affirm that harassment of staff, whether in person or online, will not be tolerated. Direct the administration to enforce clear policies that protect employees from targeted attacks regardless of where they occur. Take a firm stand against outside parties attempting to influence hiring or employment decisions through false allegations. Provide staff with safe, confidential way to report harassment and ensure those reports are investigated and acted upon. Our employees deserve more than silence. They deserve to know that Hazel Park's leadership has their back. Let us unite around a new vision and make it clear, HP can count, hashtag HP can count on me. Respectfully, Sherri Reitz, choir teacher, varsity volleyball coach, Hazel Park Schools.
Okay, thank you. I have Rebecca Ellis.
I made some posters because you guys liked them so much last week, so I thought I just gave you guys something to look at. So the first one is Don McGinnis' retirement announcement in February. This is the retirement.
I don't think you should do that.
It's over.
We can look after.
You need to sit down.
We can look.
You were addressing the audience.
Madam President, add a point of order, please. We are recessing for 10 minutes. Second, or some of the, make the second of the one.
Support. All right, thank you. Roll call, recess.
Let's just, aye.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Admin, teachers, and parents. And nothing has been done about this. Nobody stopped him. Nobody did anything about it. They want you to look into this, and they're holding you accountable to look into this. This is a TikTok posted by the former coach's wife where Heidi Fortress tells them that they did a great job last week. She's had a lot of people reaching out to them to request a special meeting. I had this weekend to prepare for this special meeting. I didn't get any extra time like they did because they have an inside person. I don't feel like that's fair at all. Why would you guys, as a board, call a special meeting amongst you guys and then tell the people that are being discussed at the special meeting? How is that unbiased? Okay? That's not unbiased. And the parent of you knows that there's a recall in January and we need 2,400 signatures.
John Peody? John?
I'd like to make it a point that anything that's given to the board has to be given to the whole board. So you might want to, if you're just giving it to Darren, it goes to the whole board. Darren's one board member of seven.
He's going to show it to everybody. I'm going to ask the parents what they want to do with this stuff because they don't trust you.
That's okay. Thank you. The next person?
It's John Peody. Sorry, Rebecca.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We are in a Board of Education meeting, and we need to have quorum and respect. This is not the quorum and respect. If I have to keep yelling, I'm going to do a recess until tomorrow because we're not going to have this, folks. In the 40 years I've been here, working here in this district and attending all of the board meetings, in those 40 years, since 1982, this in my life has never happened like this, and there was no disrespect. We need to have respect here, and we need to give the President respect. Madam President, I'm very sorry for interrupting you and making those words. Please forgive me.
Mr. Peody?
Okay. Thank you so much. Sorry. Oh, clock's not on. I don't want anyone to get mad. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyhow, the reason I'm here, you know, just...
Name and address?
Reason I'm here is just, I emailed the board last week. I got a...
I'm sorry. Did you get your name and address? I think you did, but could you give it again?
Yeah. John Peody, 28623.
Thank you.
Yep. Flanders. And then, Dr. Coopey or whatever. She said that the board was given my email because after the special, the meeting two weeks ago, I would like to sit down. I have a lot of emails between Dr. Coopey and Mr., your Hazel Park lawyer, stating stuff. I was fired for walking down a hall as a wrestling coach, and that's fine. Whatever. I'm done. No big deal. No hard feelings. Look at, look at all the coaches you've went through in the last eight years. Look at that. Whether Don's a coach or not, that's over. But there's a problem. Why, as a coach, do you not have a contract? That's, I've coached in numerous schools and have never not had a contract. Never heard of that. The kids, your school of choice, you have kids coming from all over Detroit, okay? So, a wrestling tournament starts at 6:00. There's no one to get them here. If the coaches don't go and pick them up, that's frowned upon, and that's fine. Then we got to make up rules. But the way they treat coaches, we had one key card and one key. The teachers and all that, we, we get fingerprinted. We go through stuff. They hire us. We're there with the kids. We're giving up our time and our family because we like, love the kids, okay? We're not doing it for the money. But, oh, you got to come in the front door. You got to walk around. We're going to lock this gate. You come out of that gate area, you're in trouble. You have, like, these hall monitors that just act crazy. They know who you are. I mean, Officer Piper physically grabbed me around the shoulder. I was walking to get students, take them to get their Alpha Way in, and he knows who I am. It's not like it was my brother on the street that he never met. They know I'm the wrestling coach, but that's how they treat you. That's, that's horrible. There needs to be some, like, communication between the coaches and what's going on. But there's a clique of people that make life miserable. I coached. I brought my kids. I have three kids, and they have two spouses and my wife. They come to a wrestling match. I had them walk in with me, and the ticket taker comes and yells at me and wants my money. And I'm doing it for free. I'm like, hey, are you serious? Then I get trespassed from your lawyer. How many people in the audience have been trespassed by Jimmy? Raise your hand. It's like eight of us.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Point of order, Madam President. We need to refrain on saying names of our staff, our current staff. That is the right thing to do, not to say their names.
How many people got trespassed by the Hazel Park lawyer? Every one of us. It's horrible. Officer Piper knows who I am. Everyone knows who I am. I go up there and show up there on a, uh, assembly for the kids to get honored. They don't let us know. I knew it was happening. I went up there. They wouldn't let me in the building to go honor my kids. Okay? There's a lot to coaching. Trust me. I've done it my whole life. There's tons of paperwork. There's Alpha Way-ins. There's Way-ins. We take these kids to these tournaments. We're leaving at 6:00 in the morning. We don't get out there until 8:00 at night. These kids are starving to death. I mean, that's not, that's not how you treat your kids. It's, it's just, there's, there's a group of people, the hall monitors, the higher-ups, and it's a clique, and that, that's it. If you're not in it, you're gone. I don't care. I'm done. I'm out of here. Don was a great guy. Good luck to the next guy. But just go back and look at how many coaches in the last eight years in all sports you went through, and that's going to make you go, wow. It's not right. It's not right at all. Thank you for my time.
Kim Allen, 23337 Hughes. Just a couple of things. Still trying to figure out what happened to that 30 seconds from that six-hour meeting because haven't heard anything about that. Today, I took my grandson to get his physical over at the high school, and I was talking to a wrestler that wrestled with Don, and he was talking about what a great coach Don was and everything else. And I was told by the A.D. to stop talking. Isn't that freedom of speech? Him and I were having a conversation. Then he sits down in front of me. To me, that's harassment. Why are you sitting there? There is no reason for you to be sitting in front of me. That child had already left. Then, your promised navigator for Hoover decided to start antagonizing and instigating me in that room, and I asked the A.D. to, I was like, why is that okay when I can't talk? I don't know what she's talking about. And he laughed. Then I asked who she was. I didn't know who she was until someone else pointed out to me who she was. Five, 10 minutes, she was trying to antagonize me and instigate me. My grandson goes to Hoover. That's what I have to deal with now? Is your promised navigator? What if my grandson needs something? Where's he going to go? To her? He was sitting right next to me as she was doing it. These are, like, this is what you guys are hiring? Seriously? Seriously. And someone made a comment about who hires coaches. Last I heard, you guys have hired, what, 23, 24 coaches? Why did those 23 or 24 coaches come in front of you? And no one has this time. So I'm just kind of curious on what's going to be done about any of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clea Walker, 20145 Detroit Greeley. My first thing I want to say is, the deal with these kids, these children, I don't care what grade they're in or what school they're in, you guys need to look at the people that you're hiring, period. They're working with children, minors. That should already tell you something. But for y'all to literally be hiring whoever you want, friend or not, I don't care. Clearly, you don't even, either you don't know who you're hiring or you don't care. And in that case, why are you here? Secondly, I'd like to talk about all the adults that are in this room right now. I feel like I'm back in elementary or middle school. Most of you are acting like a bunch of children. Most of you are just being straight up plain disrespectful and ignorant. Even my mother taught me better. I should expect you to know better. I feel like no one should be yelling at the board minimums, period. You guys deserve respect. No one should be in here yelling at each other, period. Respect gets respect. But the main part is, you guys are the adults that are supposed to run Hazel Park. These are the parents that are included in Hazel Park, whose thoughts and opinions count. Start acting like some damn adults. Please and thank you.
Janice Howard is our last person.
Janice Howard. My address is on the slip, or you can, my ex-reeliter who provided it for the ban letter a year ago that you have no documentation of. I'm just coming to simply require and ask for a response still on the documentation of the incident from last year. I just want to, again, vocalize pretty much what every adult that has stood up here is the lack of documentation and investigation that happens within the school district by your administration and your paralegal, your lawyer, when things are being asked for. Things are not being documented, and things are not being investigated. And I think that's what is really the root to everything that is being presented to you these last couple of weeks. No matter whose side, what side, we're all in it together. Even if our kids are not in here, we still have friends. We have to act in the best effort and support of our own children, which is why our kids are not in this district. And I just ask for you guys as a board to finally just come together with no vendettas. You guys are here for the children. You're here for the parents. You're here for this community, whether their kids come here or not. People give back to this city, and you guys owe the community as a board. They vote for you to all come together and investigate and document and provide that documentation when it's asked for, not just when you want to provide it. That's all.
Okay. Moving on to our new business, is selecting a policy firm tonight. We had presentations by Clark Hill, Miller Johnson, and Truon Law. So anybody want to open the conversation?
I would just like to say that we have put other things on hold, and it keeps being mentioned about the audit coming in and everything like that. So personally, for me, I would like to stay with what we have for now, seeing as it's free, and discuss this after we do have the audit.
I respectfully disagree. I think that part of the problem that was shown here tonight and several other instances is that our policies are not adequate.
Excuse me. Madam President, in order to discuss this issue, we should have a motion. Is that right, Mr. Patterson? Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to go with Miller Johnson for policies to, to work with new policies. That's probably not right, but...
That's okay. I'll second it. All right. Motion made by Debbie and seconded by Heidi to go with Miller Johnson as our policy company. Discussion.
Okay. So, do we have to repeat our discussion? Or we're good? Just keep moving on?
Move on?
Perfect. Part of the issue that I've noticed with all of the people here and with other things is our policies are not adequate, and if we don't do something, then we are being negligent. And I think that we need to move forward with new policies so that we are not negligent and we can start solving some of the issues that are coming up in the audience.
I unfortunately feel that if we were to read our policies, just like today, I, because I brought them up here for these reasons, when we were questioning back and forth about public discussion, if we read them and knew them ourselves, I don't think they'd be as inadequate as you thought because this past weekend, I reread every single one of them, our policies, our bylaws, and have pages of notes of things that we've been doing wrong for years. And it's because we're not reading them as a board. We're not doing our due diligence and knowing the facts, so saying that our policies are bad. They're actually not, but we're not following them.
That's true. We do not follow them as well as we should and could, but there are still pieces missing that need to be implemented. And I think that, based on the presentations, Miller Johnson was providing more personal service than the other ones.
And I can say, I don't disagree with you there. I actually really did like Miller Johnson. I'm saying for now, with all the money we're spending on other things, I think it's something that we need to wait until after we have our audit and everything back. You've said this multiple times, on other things, about not wasting money, not doing things. I just think for our community, they're already complaining about us spending too much money, that this is something we should wait to make sure that we have what we need.
Policies are used every day, every day by this board and how we manage and run the district. They are essential for us. I think there's a lot of things missing out of our current policies. We spent $22,000 on soft, a software upgrade that is not even used weekly. Sometimes you just need to move forward and, and do what helps the district. And I really think that having Miller Johnson come in and sit with us and build policies that we all can adhere to and get behind is the way that we should go.
So I've never been a Clark Hill fan of policy. I read these all the time. You're correct, we don't follow them as close as we should, and I have looked all over for athletic stuff. It's under curriculum. I'm like, why are the directions for athletics and coaches under curriculum? And it says that you have to go to the administrative guidelines. Coaches shall be chosen by the athletic director with the approval of the principal. I can't tell you. I have looked, it looked, it looked, and it's under curriculum. They're just, Clark Hill is just inadequate, in, in my opinion. It is an amount of money, that's true, but it governs the entire district. It's the rules for everybody. It's the rules for parents. If you follow them, you don't have near as much chaos. And there are so many things. Out of this curriculum section here, there's like 15 things missing from the Clark Hill. And I, I know we don't want them cumbersome. I know we don't want them long, but there should be a sentence about some of it. So I'm in favor of new policies.
I'm not saying I'm not, by all means. Like I said, I really did like Miller Johnson. Their presentation was great. Everything about it I liked. I just think, for money's sake, on all the money we're already spending, that it's something that we, we should wait on.
So can, can I ask you, how, how long do you think we should wait, Monica? A month? Six months?
It's the same excuse that keeps happening about waiting for the audit. I would like to see exactly where we're at because I know with the other item we just voted on that got approved, we capped it at 25, but it's not just going to be 25. That's only going to be for one month. We are going to be spending more money, and I would just like to see where we're at before we push further to spend more money.
I think I would take it a step further, and we, I agree that we need to work on the policies. I agree that we need to, as a group, sit together and, and do that. Miller Johnson gave a fantastic presentation. I like the user-friendly aspect that they were able to describe to us. It is a really significant amount of money that I don't think that we have right now. I don't think that we should be waiting. I think that we need to have a series of committee of the whole meetings that are focused specifically on policies. Clark Hill needs to be there for those, and we don't, we don't need to wait. We can rewrite our policies the way that we want them with Clark Hill's guidance and make sure that they fit the needs of the district and that they fit the vision that we have in the strategic agenda that we have been talking about for the past few months. That Clark Hill is on retainer. They offer a policy service as part of that retainer that does not have a charge outside of the hourly rate if they come out to the meetings. I think that we need to move forward. I think we need to do revisions. I think we need to do updates. We have a service that's in front of us. We have something that will not cost us additional money in order to use it outside of the retainer rate, and we need to move forward in that vein, and we need to do it quickly because we're leaning back on policies that I'm not necessarily sure that we interpret in the same way. And we need to sit together as a Board of Seven in open meetings with attorneys available to us, and we need to go through those and rewrite those in a way that makes sense to us. And again, while Miller Johnson did give a really great presentation, unfortunately, the way that we sit currently, Clark Hill is able to do that minus $17,500. And I don't, I can't stomach continuing to spend money on attorneys, documents, processes over and over and over again that we're not, we have protocols that are sitting in front of us right now, and we're not following them. To, to throw additional money at, at this is fiscally irresponsible at this time, but I do think that we need to move forward with policy meetings, and they need to be revised and rewritten.
So let me ask a quick question. And I don't remember, and I looked for the, I didn't re-watch the meeting just for the Miller Johnson presentation. They will come out and sit with us, and that is part of their $17,000, correct?
It, it, I just looked.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Okay. And Clark Hill will come out and sit with us at the price of the retainer, which is how much?
They're...
No.
At the price of the hourly rate. They're hourly rate. Clark Hill and Truon were the same. In order to come out, it was the hourly rate.
They all have a, a charge that they do to come out when you have changes from their set ones. Miller Johnson, I don't believe, said they come out. Miller Johnson, you work through the superintendent and tell the changes, and then they will make the changes and give you suggestions.
No, they come out. I'm talking about the initial. If we changed to Miller Johnson, their presentation said they come out and they sit with us and they go through them. And, and so we get exactly what we want. And in that, I think the $17,000, did that include the administrative guidelines as well? Do you have it written down?
It did. Yes, it does.
Okay. So my question is, is the 17 comparable to what the hourly rate? Well, how, how many hours do we expect this to take? And if we're paying an hourly rate of...
To Clark Hill.
To Clark Hill of, how much did they make an hour? Anybody know?
I think it was $245.
Okay. So $245, $250 is easier math for me. So that's $1,000 for four hours. So $28,000 are, I'm just saying it's going to, I don't know if it's going to cost, if it's going to actually save us money to stay at Clark Hill or if it's going to be more or less, depending on how long it takes us to go through all the policies and decide what we want.
I did ask at one of our previous meetings if we could ask Clark Hill these questions, and I never got responses. I asked if they would come in and what their charge would be, if they were going to charge more or if they would do this because we can look at them since they're already free, and I never got a response to that.
The other thing to think about is that Miller has staff on hand to update their web server for all the policies. That's what he stated, in that we wouldn't have to. We just have a link on our website. Right now, our staff, which is very limited, which is Chuck and the college grad or whatever we have, very few staff, would have to update those changes, and that's my concern, is that how quickly, and Chuck does a great job. I'm not saying he doesn't, but it's, you know, it's very difficult, if you're not used to it, to jump in and do those policies. Plus, the policy has a link on Miller's link. If the state changes something, a word is or are, they automatically change that, which I am a fan of because then we don't have to worry about that, and that's free of charge for us. So that's just something else to think about.
I did ask that, too, if Clark Hill could implement those links.
I like the link connection, too, because it's instant. You don't have to remember the law number. You just click on that link. It takes you to the, to the law. It's instantaneous. So, anybody, anybody else?
I like the feature. I ju, I, again, I have nothing, I have nothing negative to say about Miller Johnson, their, their presentation, their policies, the way that they presented it. I also think that linking back is, is a really fantastic feature, but at this point, I don't think that we have the luxury budget, and a reference to the revised school code is what we can afford. I just think that $17,500 every year that could be spent, a little bit more student, sorry, you're right, it's $4,000 a year. I shouldn't have said it that way. I misspoke. I just think it needs to be classroom-based. I, I have, I don't have a big argument because I have nothing negative to say about Miller Johnson. It's, it's strictly fiscal in my mind.
Okay. Ready to vote? A roll call, Ms. Buchow?
The front boys? Yes. Fortress? Yes.
Again, strictly based on finances, I will happily work with Miller Johnson if that's the way that we go, but based on the fee, I'm a no.
Fox?
Yes.
Lutte?
No.
Enter.
Yes. Motion carries four to two. So we will be Miller Johnson policy. The next is wrestling conversation. Okay. We, I shouldn't say we. I, I don't know. This came about because discussion of the process is what I'm getting out of these meetings a lot of times, is we don't have a process or we don't follow the process. So we'd like to know the process. There's, our protocols say that all personnel comes in front of the board to be approved. Our policy says something different. The postings at Open School says all coaches apply to edu staff. Some coaches are hired, recommended, and came in front of the board, and then edu staff comes in front of the board. So for clarification, how does this work exactly? The teacher's contract says the jobs must be posted every single year, but where is it written that everybody must apply every single year? If you're not a teacher, you're not going to see the contract, so you're not going to know that that's even there. So does somebody notify them that they have to reapply every year? If you're an edu staff person, do you reapply through edu staff? It's, it's very confusing. Did a lot of reading, but I know every person comes in front of us, and then we were told, no, they don't. So I don't know. Anybody have anything to add?
I just think it's very confusing. I think that all of this is happening because the lack of information and consistency.
Would you like me to speak?
I, hold on. Can I have one second? Is this an informational agenda item? I mean, because again...
Well, are we making a motion?
I, I don't...
Oh, good point. We didn't make a motion. I just wanted discussion. It says conversation, so I guess we have to do a motion to converse.
No, we can talk.
No, I just didn't know if we were moving towards an action item or, like, what, what was the purpose of the conversation? If it was clarification, if we needed a presentation, if we needed to give somebody time to put something together in order to answer the questions, like, I just wanted to make sure that we have a, we're not just battling up here.
I'd like to be able to share with you and ask Dr. Domich, who was here when I was gone, Mrs. Kales, and Mr. Patterson, and Mr. Plunus, if necessary, about the process. The process a couple of years ago was put in place through the negotiated agreement, and the statements have been moved to two different spots to... And so after the fall is over, in January is when the HR was directed to begin doing that in the January timeframe, that got pushed off a little bit this year. And then the spring coaches would be done after the season is over. At that point then, our athletic department would follow the normal protocols, which is, you know, our items have to be put out there for everybody and normally we push out all the Schedule Bs to all of our staff as well as then they have to apply online. And Mrs. Kales sent an email out to our staff and they had the ability to say what they might be interested in back to her. And that is those that are in-house, the teachers, that's the way that they apply back. I believe that was done this year as well.
Yeah, the application, does it say all non-Hazel Park schools employees? They have to complete the, the application online through edu staff as well, but not for the in-house employees.
Right. Edu staff is for once someone's been hired as a coach, then if you are not a school district employee, you go through edu staff and you're an at-will employee, it's on the contract that states you're an at-will employee. And then every year they have to update their information if they're continuing and we disconnect or connect them. That's how we do our substitutes. Mrs. LeFrenzys, you probably dealt with that as well about going through there, you're at-will, you're hired through them, however you work for Hazel Park Schools. I think, so yes, that, that is it. Then the athletic director looks at the applications, they interview and they make recommendations. They don't go to the principal anymore, they come, the athletic director, because since we hired way back when Dave Myler, that person reported to the superintendent, the recommendations go to HR. Then HR makes sure that the application is in, she makes sure that the references are checked, they make sure that all the pieces of paperwork are in, and then they call the person and either say thank you or congratulations and/or they send an email and/or they send them off to get fingerprinted, et cetera, if they haven't done that. Do you want to step in on any of those pieces?
No, I would agree, we are also verifying any of the experience years that they're having to make sure that we're paying on the right level as well.
So that, that is the process. What we have done is a couple of things, given this whole situation, that we think we'll approve upon, listening to some of the public comments. One, all of our coaches will now have Hazel Park emails, will be on a coach email and be expected to follow those coach emails. That's not something that was done before and I think it makes it difficult when you're trying to push out into emails. And some people, I would remember Tom saying as well, some people want text messages, some people want the personal email, some people do this. We have said we will consolidate it into a coaching email. The other piece that we are doing is in the letter of application. We are placing a statement that says this is a one-year position, you'll have to reapply and you're an employee at will. Did I miss anything else that we added to that?
Just in there missing any of their certifications that they need or if anything needs to be updated to their edu staff application, as a for instance, every year their conviction disclosure needs to be updated every year. And then if they are missing like their CPR or concussion or anything else that's expired, those are all listed as well.
The other piece that we added is there is a, a coach meeting every year that coaches have to attend in the fall and then in the winter as well. And hopefully there'll be some monthly coach meetings. We've gotten a lot of feedback from our coaches regarding that. And that when Mr. Patterson did the presentation, it wasn't written in there, but I, Mr. Polynas did put in the presentation last week again, you have to apply every year, you're an at-will employee and you'll get paid when you turn all your uniforms, et cetera. And so we, we've put some items in based upon the recurring conversations that have occurred that I hope will make it smoother in the meantime.
So it's still not written anywhere that you must reapply. Doesn't specifically say that board policy or anything that you must reapply.
Well, I, I think it's unwritten, President Hitten, that when you post, you have to apply. So you're posting a position to provide that for opportunities to apply, that's what it means. When you post, you apply. And I would let Mr. Patterson opine upon that, but that is, that is in education what it means. If you're posting, you can't just give it to someone who applies, you have to give them an opportunity to interview.
Okay. And the, in the board protocols, the wrestling person was hired, I presume, but it was not brought in front of the board. And it says personnel changes shall be presented to the board monthly by the administration and approved by the board. And then we got this note that said that people don't, our coaches have not come in front of the board. And so this says that any personnel changes come in front of the board. And this person was brought in front of the board in March on the, for approval of the recommendation. So that was just March, five months, six months ago? And now they don't, these people don't, coaches don't come to the board?
Well, I think we had that conversation that I think it's been very sporadic. And so the other email that has been sent to HR is that, uh, two more things. One, when those come, to make sure that you take down the postings, so part of Mrs. Anderson's role is that they send a letter, she gathers it and starts getting the hire letter to make sure that postings come down right away. It's, so on the checklist of things that we do. And that also to make sure that every position is including the entire Schedule Bs. It's not just coaches, it's the positions that the teachers have in the building, there's tremendous amount of positions that we put a different place on that hiring spot so that they all come on a regular basis. And so I think it's been hit or miss over the years and I think I explained that as well, that that is something that, that I have asked for the HR department to put into place.
So when did you ask the HR department to put this stuff into place?
Well, it's been over the last several weeks that we've been doing different pieces that we have emailed. We have HR meetings on a weekly basis and we discuss that.
So these are to improve the process, correct?
They are to improve the process based upon feedback.
So the process was broken?
The process was not broken. The person that was hired in the wrestling was the only one that applied as of the time that Mr. Patterson interviewed on June 10th and gave them the hiring on June 10th.
So is there any documentation on when that position was going to be, how long that position was gonna be open for? Let's say, is there an expiration date when you post, like we are going to start interviews at this point?
We don't.
Or when we're gonna close the post?
We don't open and close the post all the time in that manner. Go ahead, Mrs. Kales.
The job applications for the coaching online, all list. Applicants will be accepted and the position is filled. In this particular case, the recommendation letter was written on June 16th. It wasn't actually sent to HR until June 18th. I was on vacation that week and didn't come back until the 23rd, I think. So, you know, the job wasn't actually taken down until after I returned, but it was, it was sent to me while I was on vacation.
Mr. Patterson's email also states, or letter that he sent us, that he sent the recommendation letter to H P Resource on June 16th.
I thought I read something also that Mr. Patterson said that he was getting rushed from HR to get this position filled quicker than what he thought he had. I thought I read that somewhere. It might've been in some other documentation and not the stuff we have here.
So if I can just for one second, in our message from Mr. Patterson, it said that he was encouraged to complete the hiring recommendations for the fall sports. In June, you should definitely be having your fall sports coaches already done. So to be encouraged to complete it before he was done, I think is not asking too much. But that was fall, this is a winter sport, so I wouldn't say that he was encouraged to do these things any more quickly than normal. I think that we did have some conversation about trying to get some of these things wrapped up before Mr. Polynas took over and also so that we could get some summer camps scheduled as well, because we still had not had any camp scheduled for that particular sport.
And I'm, I'm struggling to hear when, last year as well, because we do summer camps with the head coaches, the year before, they were also encouraged to get those coaches in place so that they were in place for the kids, the head coaches encouraged them to do that.
What's common practice I've learned in a lot of districts is if people don't reapply, the person just has the job. If the teacher's not interested in the contract, they gotta give a 60-day notice, then, then there's interviews, but if nobody comes forward, that's why I mean it's important to say that you must reapply all the time, otherwise that person just keeps the job and you're spending a lot of time of interviewing and re-interviewing people that have been there and been successful. So if nobody applies, the person just moves up. That's what's common in a lot of districts. That's probably why they don't lose coaches all the time, my opinion. But I'm thinking when we, when people leave, we always get resignation letters and we don't have anything written formally. It's been repeated over and over that it's been on Facebook, I, you know, that Donald said he was leaving, et cetera, et cetera. But it's not in writing and I think many of us could say, there's lots of times that we've done something and we're quitting. I'm quitting, I am not going back there, I'm quitting that job tomorrow. Edu staff requires a written resignation, so I don't know if he works for edu staff or still, or if he works for us. But everyone turns in a resignation letter and I think before something like this happens in the future, it should be requested that you put it in writing. Because you can say a lot of things when you're upset and not really want to do that.
I don't, I don't know that we can talk about a specific person, it's not appropriate. But what I, but I, what I can say to you is that oftentimes people don't put it in writing and we do it for them, especially in a coaching situation because they, they leave. And I think.
Can you please stop? Yes. Be quiet.
And so we certainly can develop some guidelines that you would like to see out of the HR for an HR handbook to look at these steps as well, to make sure the board is feeling comfortable with the steps and the processes that are put in place going forward, which includes some of the things that we have and, and take a look at that. And perhaps you'll see that as you go through your new policy manual, that there's some things that you want to think about, that you want to add, but this would be more under an administrative practice and not be necessarily in the policy for a board.
So where are we going to write all these new things down, that this is how the process is going to be, so that anybody can find it and anybody can see it?
But, well, you can't. It's not possible to have any, every single process be written down in practices. We have employee handbook that perhaps we can add an additional section about athletics for that in there that you guys get every year, but there are gonna continue to be things that are just practices that are in place. But given this, this is exactly, we, we did, we put it in writing in the presentation for the coaches, we put it in writing to the administrators for that. And so the, the prac, those are practices that we do from within, not necessarily board-approved practices that are put in place.
Correct. But even in the administrative guidelines, it does not mention edu staff at all under coaches. Though I think there was in there.
That, that wouldn't be something in administrative policies or practices. That would be the work that we do in, in doing our day-to-day work that's under the guise that you guys give me the ability to do the day-to-day work. Edu staff has been here for years. That is, if, if you would like to approve the use of edu staff every year, it would be the contract that we've had for years that gets signed every year.
I'm not saying that they're, that we shouldn't use them, I'm just saying it doesn't say, even in, in our policy, it doesn't say that we're approving a third party for our coaches or any other staff, which I know they've been there for years, I've been subbing for 22 years, I've been with edu staff for probably 16 of the 22. My son coached here and he applied through edu staff. But it gets confusing if you're applying through edu staff, but you're being picked by, it just makes it confusing as to who you actually work for. And so I, I would hope that we could, when we do our policies, we can put that we are willing to work with a third-party vendor for these positions, subs, coaches. I know that in other districts, crossing guards work through edu staff.
Some teachers work through edu staff, secretaries work through edu staff. It's a way that individuals save money from not paying retirement when they push those, those pieces through edu staff. And as you know, you just agreed to remove subs and hire them through edu staff earlier in a board meeting in order to take some of those costs away from the school district to save money.
So I'm just saying that it, I guess the flow from the policy to the administrative guidelines to the people is getting mixed up. So I'm glad we're going with new policies because that's something that we definitely need to fix. But in the meantime, for the, whoever, and not just wrestling, in general, however many coaches this happened to, how can we help them?
Well, they, when they're hired from the athletic, or from the, go ahead, Mrs. Kales, please speak.
So the, the letter that is, that was sent out specifically notes, this is for one year, you will have to reply next, you will be evaluated and you will have to reapply next year. Every single coach for the 25, 26 full year has received that.
Okay, so in their evaluation, are they reminded if you want to keep your job, you have to reply?
I would ask that the person who's doing the evaluation, would add that to his evaluation, yes.
Because I would think if, if they got a positive evaluation, that they should definitely be reminded because that.
Well, they, they, they should be reminded through their, we have the group email.
Through their school email. So, and again, as I was able to with the school employees, sent out a Google form that said, H P Staff, we have the following coaching positions open, please check off. And I listed all the sorts of the high school, all the sorts of the junior high school and, you know, popped up in a spreadsheet, handed it over to the athletic department and said, here's all the employees who, who, internal employees who have applied.
Part of our negotiated agreement with our certified staff is that they have first preference. They even have the ability after we've, let's say Amy Creepy is hired as the swim coach and I don't work for the school district, but Jimmy Patterson decides, and he's a teacher, he wants to be the swim coach. He has the ability through that 60 days that you talked about, President Hitten, he has the ability to kick that process back in place and then we have to do an interview, an interview off about who has the most experience. We have tried to keep our, we negotiated to give an openness and the ability to hire the person with the most expertise, to not just have the teachers get the job, but if they are equal, so if Jimmy and I have the same swimming experience, but Jimmy's a teacher and I'm not, Jimmy gets the job. And so of course, always through time, what we've seen is that less teachers want to spend after-school time and you hire more outside coaches. And so, you know, trying to figure out a way that continues to improve upon this communication is important, but the, the lean, we always lean towards our certified staff because it is part of our negotiated agreement that we approve and sign.
So it's the certified staffing members that that pertains to?
It, it has to.
It's not everybody in the district who has a certified staffing members that that pertains to?
Well, you have to post it, which means that it affects everyone in the school district that wants to coach.
Correct.
Because they must still follow under the negotiated agreement.
I understand that. I'm just saying that we are posting it specifically for the certified staff.
You're posting it for anyone that wants to apply? And we do have a piece in here that says, if there's two people that apply and I'm a teacher and I've never coached before, but that the outside person has coached, that person would get the job over the teacher. So it, we have, the union has agreed to put a balance in place for us that we're just not bringing somebody in with no coaching experience over somebody on the outside. So it affects everybody, but which many things do within our negotiated agreement. Our Schedule B, like being a freshman, sophomore, junior or senior sponsor, goes to our teachers first, but paraprofessionals and whatever could also apply to do that, but the first job, it gets posted to everybody and everybody has to apply for that.
So then let me ask you this. If I have a teacher and our attorney and they both work for the district and they both have equal experience, the teacher would get it over the attorney because it's written for the teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
And that is what our agreement says. If all two things are equal, no matter if you are a, a maintenance or a paraprofessional or an administrator who can't do it, nor could I think Jimmy do it, but not that he couldn't be a swim coach. But yes, it is written for the teachers. It was met, it is, the Schedule B is the teachers first.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding it properly.
In this, in, again, my oldest son is 38 years old. When he was in high school, he said the same thing. Why are all the teachers getting it in front of these outside coaches that might've been AAU or done these greater experiences? But it, the history of time, it is written for the teachers. It's a teacher position first.
A point of clarification, we're using teacher-certified staff at, in H P E A like interchangeably here. This is all the same group that we're.
That is the same group. The H P E A are our certified teachers.
Okay.
Which could also be psychs, social workers, behavior specialist.
Any certified ancillary.
Any certified ancillary staff would be included under the H P A in the clause that sits in the beginning of the book.
Okay.
And, and just a reminder, we do have a. That is the same group. The HPEA are our certified teachers.
Okay.
Which could also be psychs, social workers, behavior specialist.
Any certified ancillary.
Any certified ancillary staff would be included under the HPA in the clause that sits in the beginning of the book.
Okay.
And, and just a reminder, we do have a new agreement that you guys signed while I was out. It's 2420.
Can we get a copy of that? A book like that?
Are we shared? I think it's in your files. This is a special one that I got. The union makes these. Not everybody got them.
We got one last time. We can print them off for you from a website if you'd like. It's published on the transparency page.
Well, I like that, but I like the book.
I, I, we may have to pay for them, so we can ask them, because the union makes those themselves for their, their teachers.
You know, they post on the transparency page, are there just changes in the, in the?
No, the entire contract. Entire contract's up there.
Right. But then when they make a change, you just have the page. You have one line item, that's the book, and then all the changes are all separate. It's not one whole book every single time. It's all the changes.
No. But this time it is, because there were a tremendous amount of changes. So if we are just doing.
There's only one change.
I, I will, I'm happy to send a link tonight of where this one is for everyone. It's the whole book.
So I think this is, this is still confusing for me. But this is Edu staff, it says, please approve the following Edu staff employees who have been recommended for the winter coaching positions. And I was brought to the board. However, then this person was also interviewed by Tom Ostrick. Upon interviewing and checking references for this coaching candidate, I respectfully request support and approval of this person. So did they have to interview the person when Edu staff, we were being asked, so we have, is double duty, like Edu staff hires them?
I think, well, I, I believe what will be done for, in the future, is that just like you have HPA, HPA, non-unionized staff, GSRP, that we'll put a coaching section underneath and then out of school. I mean, you have a lot of people that do after-school activities you don't see, so we will place those in for you. And then we can put off to the side if they're employed through Edu staff or through us. So you are, Edu staff is really the employer for them in, on our behalf. But they do the background check, they have all that information, they do all the training videos and such for that. So if you're not an employee, we certainly can bring the Edu staff contract to the board if you would like to relook at that and make some changes that you would like to see, or if you would like to hire people directly. The ramifications of that are that you would be paying ORS, and that's a savings that historically you guys did before me, and you've put in place to save dollars for the schools. And many schools do it. So we could bring that contract, maybe to our, maybe not to our next meeting tomorrow, but to our following meeting. You could take a look at it and we could talk about it at that point, and then bring it to the board if you guys would like to see it.
Okay.
ORS, meaning then there would be the responsibility of front-end retirement?
Yes. If we hire them directly, we would have to pay ORS for them, yes. And, and when I came, you did have some coaches that had been going through that, and Dan Ramsett fixed that and moved them all towards Edu staff as well. It's, it's, because it wasn't consistent. Some people were hired directly by the district and some were not, and they weren't necessary employees. And so it, that was changed, so that was consistent.
So, so now I'm confused. Sorry. Even our teacher-coaches are hired through Edu staff for that position?
No.
No, they're hired through us.
We did have some people that were not teachers.
Correct.
That were hired through us in the past, and that was cleaned up when Dan Ramsett came in.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to see all the stuff that has been corrected to move forward. There still lies the situation of what happened in the past. What's the solution to correct that?
I, I don't believe that that was handled inappropriately, that Mr. Patterson explained that in his letter, that he, when it was posted in April, then he interviewed on the 10th and offered the job to the only applicant that there was on the 10th. A letter was sent, that person was hired. Then on the 16th, at 6 o'clock after the person found out that Mr. Patterson had already hired the person, they applied. The position was already filled. Mr. Polinis then emailed and offered to interview in July for the assistant coach or for the junior high coach, for those positions were over. So I have to say to you that I believe it would be, the board can choose to do as they please, but the position was already offered, accepted, the person was hired, and that, that sends the wrong message to our staff to do anything differently.
Well, if he, he's not been approved by the board, because if he's an employee of the district, then he needs to be approved by the board. He's not an employee of Edu staff.
Well, they, the policies, as well as the line before on your protocols, is that the only person that is hired is the superintendent by the board. The superintendent makes.
Please stop.
Makes recommend.
Thank you. I cannot hear.
The superintendent makes the recommendations to the board, and yes, we have not consistently brought any of our employees through Schedule B to the school board, and that is one that, as I stated, we've changed.
We just approved for Schedule B in March.
No, that was for the person that filled in for the junior high coach, because we had to remove a coach. I can't say why you sent that letter. I was not here, Mrs. Kales, but there has been some that have come from the board and some that has not. And so the remedy for that is that they all come to the board. And that all the coaches that we've hired, including the football coaches and everyone, will come to the board at the August board meeting. But they've all had letters. We don't, an example that you, you will go through with your policies, again, is a paraprofessional is hired, they're working before the board even gets that. You're really just approving. The only thing that you wouldn't approve for is if you suddenly learned that, that there was an outstanding, Mr. Patterson, you explain this better than I do, there, there was an outstanding issue that we weren't made aware of, such as a outstanding warrant or, you know, that didn't get flagged. You would not normally change that, because if we did that, then we would be not allowing people in their positions until they came to the board. You would need to have a board meeting weekly to approve positions. That is why the superintendent hires and then you, it's brought to you on a monthly basis.
I have seven hiring recommendations that came to the board in March of 2025. They're all athletic recommendations. And now you're saying that they don't always come to the board. That, that's a lot. But this says personnel changes shall be presented to the board monthly by the administration and approved by the board.
And those are our protocols, correct?
Yes.
And our policy states differently. So I mean, I think there's a balance of correcting that moving forward, but our policy says, those are our protocols. Our policy states that the superintendent will hire those positions you have won employee. And so I do agree that those are clarifications that need to occur.
Okay. Let me see if I can find, because I know you went over that with me.
If I may, President Hinton.
Yes.
I think that there was a time that the board asked to see all the coaches that were coming. I think there was a former board member who had noticed the name, and then they said, we want to see all the coaches. I think at that time, Mrs. Anderson was holding and would do one list per season at a time. Being that we haven't finished hiring all of the winter coaches, I can double-check with her, but I'm not sure if she had finished the list of the winter coaches for 25, 26. The list that you saw in 25 would have been the 24, 25 finished of the winter, the coaches, I believe. Because I think we were still hiring some coaches up to the last minute. So that may be the reason that you saw some and not all.
So it was for the spring season of 24, 25 brought to us in March.
In March, ahead of the spring season?
Yes.
That makes some sense. So it would make maybe some sense that the, the winter coaches would be all gathered together and sent in one memo. I think I've seen that. A full list of everyone who was, there was two memos, I think, full list of everyone who was an internal hire and a list of everyone who was an external hire.
I, I also want to, Article 5, Section 15, staffing assignments, placement, layoff, and recall of non-tenured, subject to any applicable collective bargaining agreements, individual employment contracts, or applicable laws, rules, or regulations. The superintendent has the whole, the sole discretion regarding the staffing, assignment, placement, layoff, and recall of all administrators and staff other than teachers as defined by Section 1, 2, 4, 9 of the revised school code. Then what makes it confusing is the board develops a set of protocols, which by all means we agreed tonight, have not been followed in many situations here. And you developed protocols which sit underneath policies that state hiring of personnel other than the superintendent. The board does not directly hire any personnel other than the superintendent. B, the personnel changes shall be presented to the board monthly by the administration and approved by the board. So the superintendent does the hiring and the recommendations, and so your protocols speak a little different than your policies. And those are the things that you'll have to look at in doing your policies and then rewriting your protocols to match the policies.
So are you, are you reading under personnel? Because, well, you do get to do that shifting and changing and putting wherever, but it doesn't say the word hire. It says you can, you have the, I have personnel, administrative, instructional, non-instructional staff. The board shall employ qualified administrators as necessary. The board shall review and approve all administrative positions and contracts. Board policies apply to all district employees, including those employees covered by collective bargaining. That's different than what you just read, right?
Right. Because that's talking about collective bargaining agreements and administrators. And this one is subject to applicable bargaining agreements, which says the same thing, though. Individual employee contracts or applicable laws and rules or regulations. The superintendent has the whole, sole discretion regarding the staffing, assignment, placement, layoff, and recall, and staff other than teachers as defined. And then your protocols state, I'm your only one that you hire. Then we bring that to you for approval. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be cleaner, which is what we've already cleared up about how we're bringing them forward to you, because the board can say, just like our board president, several presidents ago, said, we never know who's coaching. Can you please bring them? And then we brought them to you. Mr. Fox asked us to bring them, and all those coaches came in front. There were more coaches that have been coaching out there and doing their jobs, which we would have to pay, that has not been brought in front of you, because we did not do that consistently.
I thought the point of protocols was so the policies didn't get long, so protocols are easy to change and policies are not as easy. So I'm not sure that the policy needs to say the same thing, because the protocols are to make things simpler. Isn't that right? Board members that have training, isn't that, I mean, I'm just trying to, I think it's okay how it is.
I think you'll want to look at, when you approve your new policies, I think you'll want to look at your protocols, because these protocols were developed with the Neola policies.
I know you want to talk about these tomorrow, and it's like, it's a board of seven, so we'll talk at committee of the whole. I'm not making decisions on protocols that belongs to everybody. But you're right, it was created out of Neola.
And I think that's some of the differences, is that some of the work that needed to go between the two and have conversations didn't occur due to other activities happening in the last year.
I can, I can tell that this situation is tearing our community apart. People are talking about sides and, and it's just getting ridiculous. I think there needs to be a resolution to fix this. I think it's ruining our reputation and people, talking about people online just has to stop. People have lives outside of here and it's just ridiculous. So I would like to make a motion to reopen the wrestling position and start the process over, beginning with submission of the applications, conducting interviews, and making recommendations back to Dr. Wilcox, which would be brought to the board by policy and protocols. I know this is something that most, that the staff does not want, and I do understand that, you know, Mr. Wright has been hired, and I think if he is, if he would reapply for the position and just reopening it up.
We have to get a second on that motion, please.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I guess a second before you add the.
I'll second.
Okay. Go ahead. Heidi.
And just, you know, I know he ran the camp and the camp looked very successful. I don't know if he was on, how he was compensated for that, but he, if he was a coach, he should be compensated for that. And we just need to move on and heal as a district, as a community. The stuff I witnessed tonight was very disheartening. And I'll leave it at that.
I want to tell you that, you know, of course, the board needs to make the motion and make the decision, and of course, we're going to follow with what we do, but you're sending a message to our negotiated agreements that we don't respect them. And I, I think that's going to be a concern moving forward, because it would say that if you put somebody else in this position, and they have a chance of losing their position after letters have been sent out.
I was going to kind of say the same thing, that this is literally stating a clear policy violation and showing that we are not using professional conduct here. If we try to say that we are going to reopen this and tell the person who was already hired, oh, sorry, you're not hired, like that just seems like it's going to open a can of worms.
So we're going to continue having hours of public comment and, and getting our staff beat up, our board members beat up, our community members beat up, our spouses, comments written about them. It's just got to stop. If somebody can come up with a better solution, I'm open to listen. I'm open to listen, but it has to stop.
Our policies clearly state that we do not hire any personnel other than the superintendent. So going back to saying we should redo this all over again, is saying we didn't trust Mr. Patterson to do his job. We did not trust Dr. Wilcox to do her job. We did not trust that they hired the person that they saw, saw fit to do so. So a resolution would be, we accept what they did. That's what we're supposed to do. We are supposed to entrust in them that they're doing their job. So what you're saying is that we don't, or you don't, trust that they did their job.
Well, they have already stated throughout this conversation, multiple changes they have done to correct their job and moving forward. So in this instance, and in this particular case, I don't think that everything was maybe followed as it should have been. Do I think that in every case? No. Not at all.
I, I think we need some clarification from Mr. Patterson in his role as district council, not as prior athletic director, that we are, we are shoving a cart well before the horse and even making this motion, because in order to reopen what we're calling a process, what we need to do is effectively terminate a currently hired staff. And one, if we are discussing the termination of a staff, we need to close this session. And two, we need clarification from our attorney, the.
Ramifications.
The legalities, the ramifications.
Right.
What happens if we go to somebody and say, hey, we're letting you go, and the reason is, we feel like it. We just want to start fresh. And to, I don't, I mean, I, I, I get that there is a difficulty in understanding the decision. I get that there are people that don't disagree with the decision. I understand there are people that don't agree with the process, but it happened. Somebody is currently doing that job, and for us to sit here in public and essentially say, you're fired because we want to start over, is not only a really, really rocky message to send to our current staff.
Okay.
But I think that we need, we need to close and we need clarification, because if we're going to, if we're going to discuss the termination of an employee, we need to be in a closed session. And we also need a legal opinion from our attorney about what happens if we make this move right now.
I'm, April.
Because we are wide open to.
April, I am open to other suggestions to make this chaos calm down.
I agree. Yes.
So I am open.
I think your, your piece is, is that was proper protocol followed? And I reviewed that with Mr. Patterson beforehand, and it was, the things that we are putting in are not things that are illegal or anything along those lines, they're just ways to improve the process.
I, I, I hear your words and I, I appreciate that. I want to see documentation. If you can give me two years of hiring patterns from athletic direct people, coaches, for two years, and when they were hired.
I, I believe that this is.
Their postings, how long they were there.
This is also not appropriate to be saying in public session about your, your staff, that they hadn't been following for two years.
Not mentioning any names.
Yeah, I'm not.
You are, you're stating us. You are, you're stating us standing up here in, in the group.
Well, I'm just asking for documentation. Show me how this, show me how the process worked. You're telling me, and I, I hear all your words, but I am a visual person, and I would like to see that documentation.
So, can we go back to April's request of Mr. Patterson?
So, my question to that is, can we go in closed sessions today, or do we have to post a closed session and then go in?
You can't go into closed session.
I would like to hear Mr. Patterson's response to, from April.
The audience has to stop, please.
I think this matter should be discussed in a closed session. We have to discuss the potential dismissal or...
Close, yes, sir.
I think this matter should be discussed in closed session. The potential dismissal or discipline of a employee is, is appropriately discussed in closed session. That doesn't render any of the other previous observations with regard to the process or the protocol, but individually, whether it's him or any other employee, we should have a closed session to discuss that before making a decision.
I believe they have to be invited, do they not, into closed session?
They have, they have a choice if they want an open or a closed session. It's up to them. I don't think that we've scheduled one tonight, so...
We don't have one on our agenda.
No.
So, we can't do it today? That was my question.
I would also, Mrs. Hinton, ask that you remind the audience that if you're disrupting the meeting, that you cannot stay, so that we just remind everyone that that has to stop.
And that's not a commentary on the direction or the decision. It's more a commentary on overall discipline or dismissal of any employee. Anytime we're going to discuss that, it shouldn't be discussed at an open, it shouldn't be discussed at an open meeting in all fairness.
Okay. So, what's the solution? I need a solution. I, I requested the special meeting. Doesn't mean that it was approved, so another Board member had to agree to it also, because it does take two Board members to approve a special meeting. And, so, what's the solution? I've asked for a solution for three weeks. People think I'm playing favoritism. I'm not. I'm advocating for the kids, as I think we all are. We've heard many speak. We've had one school us today who was, nailed it, appreciated it. There needs to be a solution. I don't want to sit in this room again and have the same conversation, hear the same things over and over and over again. And I think we owe it to the community, we owe it to the students, and we owe it to everybody to have a solution.
I think unfortunately, Heidi, what you're looking for is a way to make people happy, and what we have here is a really controversial decision and a very polarizing decision, where a solution is only, a solution is going to either stay a problem or it's going to create a problem. This is, it's been emotional, it's been difficult. We've had allegations tossed around that now it looks like we're going to be having an additional investigation because of parents that have come forward. The, I, I get what you're saying. I get it, that we don't want to have to perpetuate this, but, one, I don't know that we're not perpetuating it no matter what happens, and, two, I think my, my first question is still sort of a question mark of, of an answer, in that there is somebody that has this job right now, and if we continue with emotion, if we continue with a solution, if we're just looking to make a change right here in this meeting, it is pretty unlikely to happen, because we cannot, we cannot move forward, we cannot reopen, we cannot make a change, we, we can't do this without telling somebody that they are fired. And we do not have the ability, the authority, the, the, I mean, the, the moral, the ethics, the legal, I mean, all of it is a question mark, because somebody has this job, and if that person comes forward and says, "I was terminated without cause," if they say, "This was reopened inappropriately," if there is something that is involved in the legalities of this that we don't understand...
Right.
I, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting on anything like that today, because we don't understand the ramifications legally or financially of what happens if either side comes forward and says, "Okay, here's what's going on now." I mean, I, and that's why, again, I understand that Mr. Patterson was the interim Athletic Director at the time of this decision, and that, you know, his name sort of carries dual weight on a lot of these documents or some of these different letters, but we can't, we can't sit up here and say, "Okay, reopen this right now today," without telling somebody who isn't here, doesn't have the ability of due process, to say, "You're literally firing in an open session."
I 100% hear what you're saying, but please give me another solution.
Sometimes there isn't one.
Can we put the closed session on next week?
I, that, that's what I think is a bummer. Some, there's, sometimes there isn't a way to make everybody happy, and that sucks, but sometimes there isn't one. Somebody got, I, I get it. I mean, Mr. McGinnis regrets the decision. They're probably kicking themselves for the way that they pointed their messages forward, but somebody has the job.
Did we receive a letter of resignation from Mr. McGinnis or, or from Etchescot?
To be clear, I am not saying that you regret the decision to submit a letter of recommendation. I'm saying any of, of this is going forward.
Mr. Patterson, will you speak again about the process that you put in place? And they are yearly positions. They were posted in yearly positions. Go ahead.
My letter, my letter speaks for itself, and there was no letter of resignations that was submitted.
But also in your letter, you said, "After having been informed that Mr. McGinnis would not be returning next year, I completed a hiring recommendation letter."
Correct.
Would you share how you were informed that he wasn't returning, the various ways?
Multiple ways.
Could you, could you share with the Board?
There were, he informed me, others informed me, there was a posting after the regionals. I know that they were reflective on the last day in the school, so...
Can I ask you, what does it mean to put your, take a picture and put your shoes out? I know that Mr....
I didn't take a picture of his shoes.
No, no, we didn't. That, when his shoes were out there, what that means in the wrestling community, and then also what Mr. Garrick said.
I don't think that's relevant.
You are asking if he resigned, and we're sharing it.
I do have to say, I can tell it's hard for you right now, but you did say that he informed you, and for me, I feel like that is enough. He informed him, he is not, it's in our letter, he is not coming back. We have to accept what is here.
No, you have, you can, you have your three minutes.
I make, I'd like to rescind my motion, and I'd like to make another motion to request that the Board approve a third-party investigation for a threat against our staff and a threat against some members of our audience at our last Board meeting.
I, I think that we should be having that conversation in a closed session, because I think there were many threats that individuals have said.
Mr. Patterson?
I think Mr. Patterson's doing an assessment right now on a threat that was given to him that he should not be doing, and I think it should be delegated to a third-party service. I think he was involved in the situation, and I don't think he could, I think it should be a bias.
No, the question... The question...
The policy states that unless it's a threat against me, that I, they should come to me, and those are brought forth, and then Mr. Patterson is our District Attorney. So, the only threat that the Board should be involved in, and then it sets, should be one that's related to me. We can go back to our policies for that.
Again, hence we need to change our policy, but we were told last week that we need to protect our staff. So, yes, you are employed, and yes, that is part of our thing, but if we're protecting the whole staff, one matter of time has got to...
There's a harassment policy that you guys approved in place about how we follow with harassment, and that harassment complaint, complaint comes, and it goes to our harassment officers, which are Christie and Jimmy, and I make that determination. They give me the advice, and then I make a recommendation, and your policy state, it rests with the superintendent.
So, you have Mr. Patterson, Patterson looking into it, but he was involved in it. I think that...
He was not involved in a threat. And so, he is an attorney and very capable of doing that and bringing the, he's shown me many times, bringing the evidence to both sides. He might not like what you hear, but that's not the point. He is, that's what he's paid to do.
Okay, well, the Board can dictate to you on, on what to do and, and make recommendations to you, and I have a motion on the table to have that done with the involvement of you and the Board President. It was, I believe, second, was it second?
Could you be clearer on your...
Are we saying that Mr. Patterson cannot do his job as an attorney?
No, I'm saying Mr. Patterson is very capable of doing his job as an attorney and very capable, but he was also involved in the situation that I don't think...
I'm not sure I understand what we're investigating. There's several complaints that we have that Mr. Patterson's investigating.
I'm also concerned, now, this is more money and more money and more money. Every time we come up here, there are certain Board members that say, "We don't want to spend money, let's wait for the audit, let's do this, let's do that, and then, let's do a third party, let's call the lawyers again," even though we have a lawyer.
And, yeah, we do, and we are losing money when people watch this and see us so, all these people coming to us, we're losing money. We're losing respect. We're losing a lot of things. We're losing credibility, and that is harming our district, and our job as a Board is to not harm our district.
You also need to follow the policy, though.
Madam President, we have a new motion, and it was seconded. Can we have roll call, please?
Is there, nobody else wants to comment? Any other Board members? And, can you repeat the motion, is to have a third-party investigation for...
I'm not sure what.
She said it was threats against staff and audience.
I would love to have this, a closed session next week, so we can put it all out there and everybody can understand what we're doing, the legality behind it or not behind it, or... And I know that's not part of the motion on the table, but...
I would agree with you, Debbie. I would rather know what we are talking about than voting on something.
I think you're talking about two different things, that's right.
Yeah.
I don't think that would be a closed session.
It's a closed session to discuss what the, the...
A third-party investigation.
The motion that I, I rescinded. No.
Oh, the motion you rescinded.
The motion I rescinded.
I would like to suggest that, given that you're going with Miller Johnson, that we bring a Miller Johnson attorney, and Bev and I speak with them about this whole situation, and can it go into closed session, so it's a person we have not worked with before.
Perfect.
And we can talk about what the next steps are and make suggestions to you before the next meeting next Monday.
Perfect. I am 100% on board with that.
Well, I'll call Kevin Sutton tomorrow to set up a time with Bev and I.
That was what my motion was all about, so...
So, you're rescinding it?
I'm not, I'm rescinding my first motion...
Okay.
...to put the job back up. I'm not rescinding my second motion. It's still on the table.
What was the second motion?
The second motion was to look in, to have a third-party investigation, which is now recommended to use Miller Johnson.
I'm suggesting that you table that. Miller Johnson speaks with Bev and I about what proper protocol and steps we should take for all of this conversation here, and then...
Then I give Bev, President Hinton, and Dr. Amy Crouby, I'd like to make the motion to give Dr., thank you, Dr. Wilcox and Bev Hinton to contact Miller Johnson for recommendations on how to move forward with this situation at hand.
Are you rescinding your other motion?
Yes, I'm rescinding my, and I'm rescinding my prior motion.
It's hard.
Thank you. Good commu, good conversation tonight.
Okay, motion made by Heidi and seconded by Debbie to have Dr. Wilcox and President Hinton contact and speak to attorney from Miller Johnson.
I was suggesting Kevin Sutton, since he has...
Mr. Sutton.
Yeah, since he's already, you've met him, and he's doing the policy, so we can kind of meld that into one.
If that's his specialty, if, you know, if he can, yeah.
Okay. I like that motion. Any, any more comments? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Fortress?
Yes.
The Brown Boys?
Yes. Unfortunately, I was not present at the last meeting, so I'm not certain of the instant, or the incident that's being discussed. I will abstain from voting, because I'm, I'm unclear what I'm even voting on.
You're just voting and giving them the right to talk to Miller Johnson?
I understand that, but I don't know what the investigation is or what the incident was, if somebody wasn't here.
Okay, well, that's tabled.
Fox?
Yes.
Lutti?
Yes.
Answer.
Yes. So, motion carried six, who, oh, yeah, Mr. Becker. I, I made a five, yep. One abstention and five yeses, so the motion passes. Now, are we on to the next? And hopefully, we're going to get some resolution out of this, right? Public comment? You got Jonathan Satterfield. Is there just one?
Yep.
Why don't we give them a minute to...
Right one?
Okay. I request a two-minute, we'll give you five. Five, perfect.
What are the five, five-minute...
Make a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Aye.
Aye.
No, I'm not giving you that much bad dollars anymore. Could bid for a very long time and give money behind you a little bit, but we don't. You know what? I think less for the dollars than actually being field down there than I do my house. So I always thought it was just a school war and that man. And then he built a prison. It's terrible. Especially if there were new policies for all of the things you're on. Nobody's buying. And then it puts the kids a little more. I want to have $2,000, $27,000. They go $300,000 out of the stock. So I mean, many should ask for the benefit of the kids because that's the one that's all of it. Actually, taking my kids to a class that's run by a chairman, you like going to wrestlers or opera, I'm burning. And even these three, these directors. If you have to stop around opening. And so people don't do that from whatever that is. Even not to me. And wrestling builds, building the gun. And you teach people how to be a junior. So with some of that, that's one of the kind of really from lobby leaders that they definitely make it. You just get it all together. So thank you very much for this.
Kaylin McGinnis. Is it working? I don't think.
Dash, can we give her one of these out here? Okay.
Kaylin McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. You can't say it's a fair process when the school lawyer who was filling in for the athletic director position at the time, an HR and the athletic director's assistant, knew about the issues taking place and still wanted to hire the person we had issues with to be under Donald, knowing it would create conflict. Why do you think they didn't want Donald to help interview him? Hence this whole debacle? Which I do have that voice recording of. And I just wanted to let you guys know, the lady that came up here that said something about Donald dropping off something, yes, we did drop something off. We dropped off Drew's scholarship form that was due to the school. So we had to go turn it in that day. So that's why you guys saved him. I'm not exactly sure what kind of role models you're wanting, but the staff members that openly allow their kids to smoke marijuana and drink are not it. Biker gang wannabes that work for our schools are not it. The mean girls that wear pink on Wednesdays and invite only certain staff members to wear it are not it. Parents and staff members that know that a school trip curfew is 10:00 PM and let boys attend a female school soccer trip and allowed the teens to play in the pool until 3:00 AM are not it. Actually, that sounds like quote unquote, setting the mood for coeds to me. The staff member that has thrown dishes in at his wife and kids are not it. The staff member that was taken in for domestic violence against a school employee wife is not it. Parents making fun of children who came up here to speak are certainly not it. Like, come on, you guys are grown adults doing these things. You're acting like children. You should know better. Stop enabling each other's nasty behavior. Do you honestly in your heart think that the proper procedures were done in this hiring process? Me personally, I don't want my husband to come back, given the retaliation we've dealt with. It's too hostile of a work environment. The wrestlers want him back and Donald would gladly come back for them, but I think it's too much of a risk. Could you guarantee a safe work environment? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Krumhelmer.
Andrew Krumhelmer. Heidi, I want to first call you all by name. You did a great job today. I'm glad to see someone take the fortitude and constitution it takes to be a leader up here. It takes a leader.
I can't hear you.
Damn, I'm not going to talk loud because every time I talk loud, the cops come. So I'm going to talk soft. So anyways, what I think is happening here is what you can just see. There's leadership when there wants to be leadership, just pull back when there doesn't. There's this side, then there's not this side. Somehow there's no policy being broken. It's great, but we've implemented 32 new policies. You could hear it when they talked about, how do I say this? The city, the, no, the school's attorney. He was hurried. He was hurried. That was the word that was used. Let's everybody hear it. He was hurried. And that just got passed right back. Not, it's not what we're looking for. This is not what we're looking for. It's toxic. It's toxic. Let me just keep on relaying that word. It's toxic. By body language, by language, by how people are speaking, everything is toxic. And it's always one common denominator. No matter how you do these arguments, no matter what side you're on, no matter what you look at, how you look at the schools, wrestling program, everything else. Me personally and my family, the 100 years I represent, I'm going to do it just like we did the Junior Vikings. If there's a person that I don't want to be involved with there, I'm not going to be involved in. This person walked away and now we're back involved with the Junior Vikings. We're helping out with fundraising, we're helping with money. My family's going to put their money where their shows is. It's not there. Same with schools. I'm not having anything to do with this school again until this person leaves. It's the bottom line. So you either do what you want to do, you have the will people are behind you, she should be, person should be written up at least, I don't know how to separate this by not saying it, but I got in mid 11 seconds and I remind you, because we were a Christian school district back in the day. You know, we were, and I'll remind you, King Solomon. He had two moms in front of him. Can everybody remember that verse? The two moms are in front of him and they both claimed the kid, no DNA, none of that stuff. King Solomon didn't know what to do. Toiled on it, slept on it, didn't know what to do. He came back and said, all right, I'm going to cut the baby in half. I'll give a half to the one mother and half the other. One of my others thought about it and said, okay, that's a fair compromise. The other one said, no, 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 no. Better have the baby. He knew immediately it was like, I guarantee you, every one of you school bammers were resigned tonight if this stuff would stop. It would just happen to be you. Flip the reins. All you got to do is take one kid and one person and it all stops. You have a good night.
Thank you. Have Chris Johnson. Chris Johnson.
Chris Johnson, 2378 Long Crossley. As it's been commented on tonight, the board has one employee and it is your job as the board to oversee to make sure that that employee is doing their job, is following the process, is following the procedures that are in play. And as it's been explained tonight, sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. And I applaud the investigation because the whole point of having the processes and procedures in place is to, if there are questions of, is this person legitimately hired or illegitimately hired? Here's the fact, here's the fact, here's the fact. You can rely on that and you can quell all of this by following the procedures in place. So I encourage you to make sure that your employee is doing their job so that none of this happens moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Don McGinnis.
Don McGinnis, 1337 East Granite. I'm here again just to let you guys know for the weight things, the AD did sign every one of our sheets for weigh-ins. Just to let you guys know on that. On that note, I wanted to let you guys know how many times that I attempted to get ahold of everyone and so say that I wasn't the coach. March 2nd was the state finals when the season ended. March 3rd was turn in equipment. March 4th was turn in equipment and my, which I have text message proof. March 6th was turn in equipment with texts. I also had my evaluation. I even emailed Dr. Cos. March 7th, I texted the athletic department again and all kinds of coach questions. March 12th, turn in equipment days, which I have text message proof. March 19th, text message proof, turn in equipment again. March 24th, I text the AD asking for open mats. March 24th, that was. March 28th, text athletic department assistant for open mats. March 30th, text athletic department questions. March 31st, text more coach-like questions. April 2nd, text vague list towards the athletic director, asking about open mats camps. April 4th, text kids, I mean text this athletic department again, more questions. April 8th, text AD, ask about updates. April 10th, ask coach questions. April 11th, picked up the varsity letters from the office. April 13th, banquet. April 15th, dropped off equipment, varsity awards for, and dropped off the varsity awards. April 17th, text athletic department again for open mats. April 23rd, ask for updates. May 1st, ask for updates for two or three different employees, all text message proof. May 14th, meet and greet with the new AD when we did the meet and greet. I was there with the assistant coach. May 15th, text athletic department, coach-like questions, text message proof. May 19th, got the coach of the year award here. May 29th to June 4th, text athletic stuff. And from then on, after June 5th, I texted June 4th, June 5th, June 6th, and I haven't got nothing back. June 13th is when I called the superintendent about these issues of not getting no answers back, which I have proof of the call and emailed. June 14th, sent her a huge list. June 16th is when I applied. June 23rd, the job was still open, which also had interviews. June 20th, had emails.
Time, that's time. Sorry. Randy Howard.
Hi, Randy Howard. 31205 Moonon Avenue, Moore, Michigan. I wasn't going to come up here today, but after listening to everything, honestly, you can see the divide. You can see, you can see the divide that's in this city and it's in it and you can see the divide that's in here at this table. It's so evident. You know, they're going to hide behind that they, you know, they might have followed policies correctly. I don't believe they did, but I'm not perfect. All I can see what's in front of me is that she stated, if you compare two individuals, whether they're a school employee or not, the one that's more qualified would get the job. They do not want to reopen this because the current wrestling culture is not as qualified as the one that they're pushing out. And I say push because we have brought many things to your guys' attention and for, to say that they could possibly get a fair shake with some of the individuals and issues these individuals have had with our ex-wrestling coach, to say that he could possibly have a fair shake. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see how you can even make it happen according when I sit and listen to everything that's put out here. And that's unfortunate. And you brought up great points that it's broken. It's broken and you do not want to reopen it. And I get it that, you know, you're saying we hired you, but you know, look at, it's like honestly, you have one applicant. And you didn't even really, he had no high school wrestling coaching. You have one applicant. If it wasn't rushed to hire him, then I don't know. I don't know what was. If you could sit there and you could have an honest, unbiased, put these two on that, on a fair plane and see who's more suitable for the job is the fairest thing to do. And that's all we're asking. If you could sit there and you could say, Pat, he fairly, not just because he was the only applicant, fairly, he is the more qualified individual, there would be nobody sitting in this audience right now. We're here because it's not fair, it wasn't fair. And it wasn't, and everything wasn't done the way it should have been done. So when you guys do decide to investigate or talk about this amongst yourselves, I don't think that there is a fair shake going on because half of them, half of us don't want it and half of us do. Thank you.
Rebecca.
So, three minutes, let's go. What has happened here in the last two weeks is kind of like a funeral. Everybody shows up and says the great stuff about the person because the job is no longer his. You gave the job to somebody else. The things that you don't know because other kids are not being Ubered up here and brought up here or carted up here or asked to come 50 times in text messages to support him, the other kids are not being heard. Out of the kids that you heard last week, one of them graduated in 2023 and never even wrestled for him. Another one is from Royal Oak. Some of the things that you guys heard last week and you're so eager to re-investigate, that's the part you need to re-investigate. The parents, some of the parents did say that I could give this to either Chuck and now that they know that I can't give it to you, they said they'll give it to Chuck and Dr. Wilcox. But they're scared for their kids. These people are, they don't have the money to come up here four times every time you guys decide to re-investigate something. And it's not fair to them. You already made a decision and you asked for proof that he resigned. I gave you proof tonight. You haven't even looked at it. So make sure that you take a look at that because there's several things right over there on the thing that is proof that he resigned. You can't say that it was from his wife because she runs the band app for all the parents and makes all the announcements. So that was her job was to make the announcements for that wrestling team. Finally, you keep saying our community. We, us parents, the ones that are still here with our, with our kids, grinding it out day in and day out, raising money for the kids, volunteering to do their games, we're the ones who are your community. We're the ones you should be listening to. They, they quit, they remove their children, they bash the district on the social media sites and you're seriously considering having a secondary meeting to bring him back? When you have someone who works hard in the district every day, who knows what he's doing? What, how many high schools did Don do before you guys gave him a chance here to do it at the high school? Pat has plenty of experience. He's a good coach and he's good to the kids. His numbers might be down, but that's because he's actually holding the kids accountable. You have to show up to practice if you want to wrestle. If you go through this, and I know that you'll do your due diligence to go through this, the kids in here are telling you, we didn't even have to show up to practice. We just had to show up to the tournament because we knew what he was going to do. He was going to put us in a weight class that we didn't belong in, but we knew the other team didn't have no one, so we got the disqualified points. One in particular who, he's got down at 128 pounds on the state website right here. We know he does not weigh 128 pounds. So maybe bring a, bring a scale with you when you do this.
That's time.
Thank you.
Ryan Bishop.
Hello. Ryan Bishop, 1309 East Milton. I want to say, I agree with April, you know, oh, sorry. I agree with April with going into closed session because at some point you're going to have to terminate someone. I agree with that. I appreciate Heidi's forwardness. You know, one thing you guys discussed over, I mean, which you discussed in closed session, one thing you said was, at will employees, these aren't, you know, these aren't, you know, so that's just one thing to discuss about it. It wouldn't really have that much recourse on it. I don't think it really requires a full investigation into it. That's all I got to say.
Eric Comfort.
Eric Comfort, 117 West Annapolis Avenue. I believe in leading by example. As a coach, you catch me in the weight room after practice. Jimmy would see me. Jimmy probably also has seen my transformation from the time I started wrestling, like, and training after practice till now. Started off at 140 pounds, I'm 165. I know nutrition, I know fitness, I know how to get there. The reason why I haven't been this big is because I had a house fire and I lost all my groceries. So it cost me a lot of money, so I couldn't afford to be able to maintain this weight. But yeah, I know what I'm doing. Look at every other coach that's in your district. Can anybody, can any one of them run a 530 mile? I doubt it. Is anybody else trained with the kids, lift with the kids, show them examples? Show them proper form? I took a couple of kids that were powerlifting, right? And I showed them a couple of proper techniques. They placed in state because I showed them the right form because I know it incredibly well. I also showed a couple of the coaches new stretches and blew their minds about how much knowledge I have. So not only am I leaving the Hazel Park Wrestling community, I'm leaving all the other athletes. I'm an affiliate with my nutrition, downtown Royal Oak. I was working on a program for your kids to be able to get discounts on proper nutrition that is going to be able to help them succeed, give them better breakfasts, be able to help excel them in their athleticism. Yeah, you guys lost all of it. I mean, I really hope you guys take a big look and hope that this other coach that comes in leads by example. I hope he gives these kids vision. I hope he inspires them. Because I know a lot of kids looked at me and are like, can you show me more? Can you show me more? Because what I showed them gave them this much more of an edge on everybody else. Does that make sense? You guys are losing the most athletic coach you probably ever had.
Thank you.
One more thing. If you guys want real MMA experience, I have ties to Roots Jiu-Jitsu, who also has Jared Brooks, who just, who is, I believe, oh yeah, he's on TV. He performs in one championship. He actually fights for real. He fights for real. And the owner, I can get kids up there any day I want because I was his original sparring partner. He gave me the invite. Do you want real sparring, sparring? I'll take them to a real, actual dojo, not just here where they can get professional.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are up to board member and administrative comments. Any board members?
I just have one. I just want to remind that Thursday is our other back to school registration.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to clarify that there was a Facebook out there and I'd like to clarify that I have not received anyone's request that it's serious accusation and it's simply not true. As a board member, I've encouraged community involvement transparency, especially when concerning concerns arise to my family, students, and our staff themselves. If you are ever confused about my intentions or my actions, I'm always open to having respectful conversations. Let's keep the focus on inclusion and respect for our business. And then I would also like to, since you, you like this, to share that. And that the thing is, it's having their campus week and they have a request on their page for donations. If anybody would like to donate, I can send them smartphones. I think it's really appreciated.
Where can you find that? In Chinese?
I think it's on their Hazel Park Fan site, Facebook page.
Is it for like food, drinks, that kind of stuff donation?
Food, drinks, snacks.
Thank you.
If I could really quick, I just, I want to shift gears entirely. We've had a lot of conversations, especially over the summer, about how we're preparing for school, but I did just want to say a thank you and give sort of a voice of encouragement. We have had staff that have been providing services all throughout the summer. The Summer Discovery Grant wrapped up this last week on the 15th. That company was able to bring in another program at United Elks for elementary school age children, a five-day camp that I learned was actually impressive. It was provided to his department, it's for free. Amazing opportunity for those kids to come in, some hands-on learning, some STEM work and that. Parapros has been providing services at last, all stuff from, they're still there through the end of this week, extended school year, which I truly didn't realize was as intense as it is until I got to spend some time at Camp Invention at United Elks last week. And really amazing opportunity to be a tip of heads out of the summer. We often take a bit of a break. It clearly has not been. And my heartfelt gratitude and I feel pretty comfortable with the staff, everybody coming up here for all of those that were working throughout the summer to provide those continued services to kids and who will really, you know, we say that there's a three-month break, but a lot of these people are only getting like five days between the end of their work year and the start of the school year. And they deserve it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, but on that same note, I want to congratulate Hazel Park Schools for being one of the few school districts that are getting over 100, over $200,000 grant from the state of Michigan to work on our Orton-Gillingham practices and the fact that Dr. Domage has been named to the state dyslexia work group. And so kudos continues for a lot of wonderful academic things that are happening in Hazel Park.
Yeah, congratulations. Awesome. Awesome. So I just want to say that this is difficult all the way around. It's difficult listening to all of you and seeing the point and the love and the passion for people that are involved and for the community, the concern about the kids, what's happening with the students. That's number one that we need to keep in front of us. And it's hard up here. The discussion is hard. It's hard to hear that we're bad people or we're doing a bad job. We're just, we're just people too, trying to do the right thing. So going forward, we're going to work towards a great school year. Our schools do wonderful things for students and we'll have that meeting with Miller Johnson and we'll see what the results will be. But you know, it's part of the democratic process is to come out here and voice your opinion. And it's hard when you're passionate because then you may not express it so maybe kindly or something. But we all understand that it's because everybody cares. So that's all I have to say. We have a meeting next week and everybody have a nice evening.